Okay, hey. Good evening, friends and neighbors. It is Monday, the 4th of April in the 2022 of the present era. This is a meeting of the State and City Council. And we are ready to go. Whoops, hit the thing right. And let's start with a flag salute, please. Thank you, folks. Announcements, there are new additions. There is a proclamation, but we'll get to that. No appointments. Public comment, is there any public comment?
Mayor, I did not receive any requests for written or public comment here at the meeting tonight. No virtual comment. We did receive one written comment that was emailed out to everybody around 4 o'clock this afternoon and posted to the city's website.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Okay, moving on, the consent agenda for the March 21st of this year, regular council minutes. Could we have some action on that, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second, please?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So Alyssa, would you pull the council on that motion, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. I should mention Counselor McDonald was with us virtually this evening. Welcome, Ben. Hope things are okay where you are.
Yep, just fine.
Okay, good. A public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The proclamation was scheduled for the beginning there.
You want to do that first?
Yeah.
Oh. This is one of those where she has to tell me.
It's okay.
Do this first. And I respond with good cheer instead of, why are you having to remind me of this all the time? Okay, let's see, that's later. I've got a proclamation. This matter came before the State and City Council at its regularly scheduled meeting of April 4th, 2022, to proclaim April as child abuse prevention month. Whereas, every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment. In 2020, there were whereas in 2020, there were 11,642 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of which 1,171 were victims in Marion County. Whereas, we stand together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to commit to preventing child abuse in our county by raising awareness throughout the community and by educating and supporting caregivers. And whereas, we assert that strong families and safe, stable, and nurturing environments free from violence, abuse, and neglect are essential for children's optimal growth and success, which ensures ensures a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, the State and City Council asks everyone to commit protecting our children, to protecting our children, and does hereby proclaim April of 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month dated at State and Oregon this 4th day of April 2022 over my signature. So, thank you. Thank you, Alyssa, for setting that up for us. Okay. Let's see. What be next? I think we're we're ready for a public hearing, right? I always wait till I get the nod, or I should. So, this is a script I need to read at the commencement of the public hearing. And it's for the fiscal 2122 supplemental budget. Oregon budget law requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body prior to its adoption of a revised budget for the ensuing fiscal year. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input and testimony concerning the proposed supplemental budget. Before the opening of the public hearing, we will receive a staff report. And after the public hearing, we'll open it, so. Where's the where is the almost never this few pages and it still can conflict it. Susanna, would you take us through a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Let me share my screen. Listen to that. All right. Can everyone see that good? Okay.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, thank you. This evening, I bring before you some changes to our budgets. I have a supplemental budget for you. We met with the Budget Committee a few weeks back and went through these changes and presented them then. So this evening, I'm here to do a shorter version and update you one more time on the changes and requesting your approval. So the main reasons we're bringing the supplemental budget to to you this evening is because the ARPA funds were not in the original budget because by the time we found out about the funds, the budget was already drafted. So we had we added it in now. We have some unexpected capital outlay projects that needed to be done and some additional unexpected expenditures. And then with some stacking changes, we need some additional expenses. So starting with the general fund, the ARPA funds that we received for this fiscal year was $927,700, which we're going to which we're going to place 900 into the water fund for the sand beds. And the other 20,700 will remain in the general fund until we make decisions on the next part of the funds and how we're going to spend it. The changes in the general fund for materials and services, the Peace Department, we're adding an additional 30,000 to ensure that we have enough to cover with their remodel and supplies they need for new officers that they've been hiring, as well as ensuring there's enough fuel. Those are kind of a couple of key things that are really pushing on the budget. We just want to ensure so we're increasing those expenditures by 30,000. For the administration part of the general fund, we're increasing the materials service by 30,000. We've had a bunch of unplanned maintenance expenses that's been needed to be done. We have some repairs to the building that we need to do. So this is to help cover those costs and ensure that we stay in compliance of our expenditures as well. The community center has been having more activity than we anticipated. And our costs for cleaning, as well as some unexpected small maintenance things has come up. So we're adding this 5,000 to the the community center to ensure that we don't go over expenditures as well. And then for the general fund, the balance, the general fund will reduce the contingency by 44,300. Any questions on the general fund part? For the library, we also received an ARPA grant for 15,000 that we found out late wasn't in the original budget. So we're adding that grant into the budgets and of course, and the expenditures expended this fiscal year for translation services to translate materials into Spanish. So that ARPA grant is for that for the library. So we're adding that to the supplemental budget. Any questions on the library? The park, we needed to, we need to increase materials and services for the expenses for the mowing and additional fuel and just some general expenses in there. And we need to add 32,000 in capital outlay because a tractor that was supposed to be purchased last fiscal year, because of all the delays, the tractor actually wasn't received until after August of this fiscal year. So we have to change the budget to a lot for that. And of course, to balance it, we reduced the contingency by the 52,000 to a lot of differences. Any questions on the park?
Susanna?
Facilities? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry. So the mower wasn't available to purchase? Is that what you're saying? Like, we couldn't, we didn't purchase it last fiscal year? And then it was delivered? It just wasn't even available for purchase?
Correct. We put an order, but it was not available. So we had to go in this fiscal year because we didn't even get it or get any confirmation. We could get it until after the June 30th. So it needed to go into this fiscal year.
To elaborate on that, Jordan, I ordered that in May of 2021. We didn't receive it until October of 2021. That wasn't the city's fault. It's just back ordering and that's, you know, supply demands throughout the United States and the world, really.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify, so because we didn't receive because we didn't receive the goods in that fiscal year, we could not put the purchase in that fiscal year? Is that what I'm understanding?
We didn't have a price. They didn't have a confirmation how much they were going to charge us. All Lance did was request the tractor. So yeah, that's why it ended up in this fiscal year.
Awesome.
Because we didn't have all the pieces that we needed to put it in the last fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
That's the, that's the other thing, and Susanna can elaborate on that. But that's the other thing when companies require purchase orders. A purchase order is just a guarantee of funds to be exchanged. And so what we did is we did fill out a purchase order for the tractor in May. We didn't receive it until June, and that's when they, or I'm not sorry, June, in October. That's when they invoice us, that's when we pay it. That kicked it into the next fiscal year.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, because we, we need to ensure that we get all invoices in by no later than August 30th to put them in that fiscal year and we didn't even get the tractor in that time. So all that did was make the beginning fund balance bigger than we anticipated for the parks because we didn't spend the original 32 that we had in last year's budget. So now it's in this one. Any other questions on the park? So for facilities, we had some major leaks happening in the Star Theater, which is a building that is owned by the city. And those leaks were too many of them, and we got stuck in an emergency new roof. So the Star Theater now has a new roof. So we have to increase the 4,000 for materials and services for the repairs. We tried to do to save the roof. And then we have to increase capital outlay to pay for the whole roof, as well as the completion of Phase 2 and 3 of our facility study that we started in the prior year, which comes to a total of 110,000. And to balance the budget, we reduced the contingencies for the increase of the expenses. Any question on the facilities? And then for the water fund, we've added the revenue for the 900,000 for the sand beds, the sand bed one, to be done for the ARPA funds, as well as an additional transfer for the water SDCs to complete the second water source. And we got an additional grant, which I'll talk about on the next slide, that helps pay for the the second water source. And so the capital outlay expense is increased by the 956,000, which offsets the revenue that we increased by the 956,000. Any questions on the water fund? And so the SDC grant that Lance was able to apply for, and we received it, is from OWRD, and it's 154,000 grant. And that grant is to offset the cost of our second water source. So that revenue is deposited into the SDCs because the SDCs hold the funds, but the work, the actual work that's done is done in the water fund. So we increased that revenue, and then we increased the transfer expense by the 56,000. And the difference in that increases our, our funds for future expenditures by the 98,000 to balance the budget. Any questions on the water SDCs?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Susanna, was that the grant that we just talked about, the last meeting?
We talked about a couple of different grants at the last meeting. We talked about this one, and we talked about some grants we applied for. This one was actually applied and received. We've actually received a majority of that 154,000 already.
Okay, thank you, I got it.
So just to clarify a little bit more, so you understand. I was before the council a month or so ago with the feasibility, final feasibility study for the ASR, the secondary water source. That was paid for, 154,000 of that came from the OWRD grant, which you're seeing here. And another 209,000 came from the city. The city had already transferred 154,000 from the SDCs. That 56,000 is an increase just due to cost increases over the period, a two-year period. And so that's what you're looking at.
Any other questions on that? Well, that completes all the budget changes that were requested in the supplemental budget for council's approval. Any other questions, anybody thought of that I may want to go back to that you thought of after I went on to another slide?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Susanna, I just wanted to clarify something you mentioned about the general funds intergovernmental resources. You noted that they're increased by 20,700 because the city received the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I'm assuming that's in remainder of the ones that we spent already on the sand filter bed? Do I have that correct?
Yeah, we're going to, out of the 920,000 we got, we're going to leave 20,000 in the general fund until we make a decision what to do with it. And then we're going to move 900,000 to the water, to the sand beds. We, the bid is 850, but just we're going to move a little bit more just in case something, they get in there and find they need to do more. And then whatever we don't use from that 900 will, will come back to the pot and the general fund for, to go with the next payment we'll get of 920,000 from ARPA, which will be receiving in around October, and put that all together for the next plan of how we're going to spend it.
Good deal, thank you, Susanna.
And the contingency is only a little bit off because the expenses going up and the revenue coming in, that is, the 44 is a difference to balance the budget, to balance the general fund. Well, that, any other questions? Well, that completes my presentation. So the request from staff is for council to approve these expenditures for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Susanna.
And stop sharing. Okay.
Okay, now now we have to do the public hearing, right? Right, that's what it says, follow these, okay. This is after the staff reports, so public hearings open. Alyssa, did the city receive any written testimony regarding this fiscal 2021, 2022 supplemental budget?
No, Mayor, we did not.
You didn't, okay. Did the city receive any requests to testify virtually regarding the fiscal year 2021, 22 supplemental budget?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to provide testimony regarding this supplemental budget, 2021, 22? No? Okay. Uh, sorry. There was a hand waving, we appreciate that, okay? Okay, everyone apparently has provided testimony that is going to this evening. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And the thing now to do is for you councilors to decide what you want to do with this supplemental budget and the presentations. And we've got possible motions. And it's up to you folks. Counselor Hook?
Mr. Mayor, if no one has any discussion that they want to have, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1034, adopting a supplemental budget and appropriation changes for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty, I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 1034, adopting a supplemental budget and appropriation changes for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to state that, as Susanna mentioned, that we had the Budget Committee come together a few weeks ago, and so we've already essentially talked about this. We're not, we all know what this is all about, and so I feel comfortable moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, can we go to a vote on this? Alyssa, would you pull the council on this motion?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and Council.
Yes.
She said thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. Just a voice, sir. Okay, under General Business, is there anything this evening?
No, Mayor.
Anything from city staff?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay. Communications from myself or the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have a question, if anybody knows whether the Chicken Factory Community Meeting is happening on the Wednesday of this week or Thursday? Because I saw two different things running around. Does anybody know?
I believe it's Thursday.
Okay, all right. So anybody that's interested, there's going to be a community meeting that is not city-sponsored, correct?
Correct.
Someone is just hosting it here at the community center, is my understanding. And it will give us an update on the potential of the chicken farms that may be coming in or around the area, not within the city limits. But if anyone's interested, it'll be Thursday then, I believe at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor?
I wonder personally if it will change anything that we're seeing these massive die-offs of bird flu all over chicken farms across the country. Millions of birds being slaughtered, chickens and turkeys. What'll happen? Does it make any difference out here? Interesting comment, and pleased you did that. Become a, you know, what, a year or so ago when these ideas were just kind of came to the surface? Both the councilors mentioned it. One from right here, and then the right-to-farm argument, which is still out there. And it's going to be interesting as this plays out. We, we haven't had enough excitement for the last couple of years. We need something to keep us going. So thank you on that one. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, in the spirit of Child Abuse Prevention Month, I just want to put it out there to the audience listening and everybody here. If anybody is aware of any child abuse or neglect, please call the Oregon Safe Line. That's 1-855-503-SAFE. 1-855-503-SAFE. Just want to throw that out there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The public test, right here, right here. The public testimony that we received today was two individuals, one of them you may know, that would like to be appointed to the Arts, or Arts Commission. And so do we want to direct those people to fill out an application?
I have already done that.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that's just to say that we do have open positions, Alyssa, on several of our boards, including the Budget Committee, if I'm correct, you can correct me?
Yeah, I think it's Budget Committee, Parks Board, and the Arts Commission.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you're interested, send get some information from City Hall and fill out an application, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A couple of things. Last week, I had the privilege to attend Budget Training Basics by Legal Oregon Cities, thanks to Alyssa organizing that. For me, it was kind of a refresher. I think it was oriented towards new folks going through the Budget Committee process coming up. One of the things I found interesting on it, though, and interesting consideration, the facilitator was a big advocate of the Budget Committee themselves being being led by citizens instead of the governing body. He really thought that, in the, in the sense of transparency, that we already know about the budget. We've been doing with it the entire time up to that point. And he really, his best practice recommendation for the folks in that call was to really have the members of the Budget Committee take direction on the, on the process. So just something for us to consider. I had not heard that before in all my time being it, on doing it. I thought that was very interesting. So just something to throw out there for you. And then to Counselor Ort's point, I'd like to know what the process is for us. If we're receiving people that are interested in being on any of these committees, what's our process for receiving their information letter and then responding to them?
Typically, I receive and then I will pass on to the mayor. And then it's up to the mayor of who comes forward, who doesn't. I mean, it's really at his will, and then the council makes the decision of ratifying, I guess, his appointment. He makes the appointments and you guys ratify.
I guess I would ask if there's some type of acknowledgement that they've received the request? And then there's some people that I've heard that have submitted applications, if you will, and haven't heard anything. So maybe it's something we need to consider just to make sure we acknowledge that they received it and that they're being considered or not being considered.
Sure.
Anything else? Chief, you're sitting back there quietly. Anything to offer this evening, just, just for the heck of it? We just haven't seen you for a while and kind of miss that.
Yeah, you haven't seen me. Not to share too much, but I've had numerous surgeries since before last year, so I've been in healing. But been at work, working diligently, just, you don't see me here sometimes because I was on a wheel, wheel cart running around and a bunch of other stuff, so. But I've been attending the meetings virtually, so if I didn't come on, I didn't have a thing to say. But for the police department, we're diligently working on hiring folks. I have an interview with a young man later this week to see whether or not we will move them on in the hiring process or offer them a position. We have another person that's in psychological evaluations. We did hire Andrew Gamble. He's been with us for a few weeks now. We are working diligently with the rest of the small agencies here in Marion County. The chiefs have got together, we'll be hosting a pre-academy class, which is basically two weeks of some real just core, basic instruction for new recruits because the timeline at the Police Academy, because of COVID and some other issues, has getting farther and farther extended. Currently, Mr. Gamble will be going Um, currently, Mr. Gamble will be going to the academy in mid-June. But if I hire the gentleman later this week, if that works out, uh, we're looking at September before even a start date. Um, and that school's actually, a class is almost half full as it is. So, and that sometimes happens very quickly and it's full. There's technically nothing on the books for October, November, December right now at the academy. So then we're looking, anybody we hire in the coming week, or coming weeks or month that's in the chute, we may be looking at 2022 before that person even goes to the Police Academy. They may get a lot of field training. That's why the small agencies got together and we're going to be hosting that class so we can at least get them into field training. So they're at least they're out learning, um, the job, but they still have to attend the Police Academy per law. So, um, it's a, an issue that every police agency in the state is dealing with. I'll be at the chief's conference next week. I guarantee it'll be a topic of conversation of what we're doing. But it's not just our region. Uh, I've been touring, uh, the police facilities throughout the state a little bit. I was talking with the Sandy chief and even Clackamas themselves are doing the same thing. They're trying to come up with some type of a pre-academy. The old practice used to be you'd hire somebody and then within two weeks, two months, you'd then put them into the Police Academy. You get them back and then train them. But because of such of the long delays now that's from the state, we're having to, to regroup. So, uh, to reassure you, we're being very diligent. We're being very agile. We're trying to throw all of our resources together to, to help each other out. So there's a real good, common, um, theme happening between all the agencies now. We're really working together to, to help each other out. We've got a commitment that even if they don't have a student in the class, they're going to bring instructors. So it's actually a really unified front. So it's sort of nice on that, on that fact. Uh, you heard about the remodel with the police department? We've pretty soon completed it. If you've seen the new doors going by, um, brand new police doors there. They're, they, if you didn't look at them really close, you'd think that we didn't do anything at all. They matched to what we had before. Uh, the inside of the lobby's done, done a little work there. The inside of the police department has been totally redone. Um, I think it looks very nice. It's very professional. Part of the battle that we have in law enforcement now is, uh, getting recruits, um, and then, you know, retention. Um, part of that is valuing, giving value to the employees. And some of that has actually shown up into a workspace. It's professional and it looks nice and it's encouraging and, and a wanting environment. Um, we have limited things that we can do as a police department with the size of our city, but that's something we can do. We can make it a very nice place for them to walk into and, and, you know, provide, uh, just a good work environment for them. So we've been doing a lot of different things, uh, within the facility to improve, uh, retention. It is what you've heard so far, at least through the budget, so. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Chief, is it as difficult or more difficult to attract, uh, women to police work?
Yes. It's probably in the 30-plus years now. I don't want to start saying how many over 30, but over the 30 years, this is the most difficult time that we've ever seen in our industry nationwide. Flat out. This is a problem anywhere you go throughout the country. Everybody is. City of Vancouver currently is, is offering, I think, a 20,000 or $30,000 bonus to get, city, you know, Vancouver, Washington, to get enough applicants to get in. Portland's struggling. Um, small agencies are struggling. I have maybe one or two people we're going to interview at the, at the end of the week. I would tell you, two years ago, or almost three now, when I started, I would have a pool of 10 or 12. I get two or three through the process that it takes to be a police officer. Um, a lot of times those two or three, I'm not going to find a good candidate. And I refuse for the safety of the public and for this agency that we're going to lower our standards because we can't. It's the most important job there is out there, in my opinion. Of course, I'm a little jaded. I've only known a life of uniform from high school on. Um, and it's important. They, they have the, the biggest power there is and that's to take somebody's freedom away in our country. So I will not reduce our standards. So it's going to, sometimes it can be very, very difficult to find folks. I lose, I've had several officers already that, one, they went through our process and they found out how much the pay was and they dropped out. They couldn't actually, you know, do that. I've had Salem. I'm competing with Salem. That used to be something that I didn't have to do as much of because there was enough pool. I lost a candidate that literally was sitting in my office to Salem. So the industry has changed. The demands for qualified people has changed. Um, and to be honest with you, I think it's really hard. We're trying to be good cheerleaders and trying to really, you know, bring them into the fold. Um, I would say some of the people that we're hiring, um, it's true calling. They are not doing it just for, uh, the sake of, I want to be a police officer. It's truly calling. They're, they're leaving other professions and other jobs, taking pay cuts because they realize what they're doing is for the greater good of a community or, or our region. So I hope that sort of helped, but it's, it's very difficult right now. And there's not much we can do to change that. Um, it's the public. It's the public telling a police officer when they see him, "Thank you." Um, you know, writing a letter, sending an email. And it's, that's what it did, not to a chief. We've been around, we're in this for a long haul. We've been here. It's those line officers see every day. They're out in the field, working diligently. They're on a graveyard, exhausted at four in the morning, trying to chase down bad guys and people, you know, prowling around neighborhoods, um, and going into our doors. Those are the ones we need to say thank you to. So I would ask council, I would ask anybody listening today, uh, or wants to watch us later, is please tell your, wherever it is, not just state and, anywhere, I don't care what state you're in, what city, tell them thank you. They need to hear that. That's going to, that's part of the reason you guys got me three years ago, was the community basically doing that, saying thank you. And they didn't know who I was. Those things need to continue. And if anything, I would ask, uh, that they double their efforts. Get people back into this industry. It's, as I said before, I think, years ago, uh, it's honorable still and we act that way. Um, I know that's not the picture that people like to paint of law enforcement, but it is. So hopefully I answered your question.
Sort of. Let's take it another, another step. Are, are we actively recruiting minorities?
We're actively recruiting any police, anybody who wants to come in. Um, our hiring practices here at the city are top-notch. Um, we don't even, the oral board process, they don't even get to know. They get a name. That's all they get. They don't, until they turn the video on or the person walks in, it's been video for a couple of years now. Um, we don't know who they are. Um, that's literally, it's a name. That's all we get. So in that aspect, um, yeah, we, we do everything we can. Like I said, we have two applicants, I think, currently. Okay. I thought I was right. I usually try to keep track of that stuff. So we have two. Normally I would probably have 10 or 12, if not more.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You bet. Anybody else have, since we're here, are doing this? Sort of fun. I haven't gotten done this in a while. Okay. Thank you.
One more?
Yeah.
What would you, just a personal opinion? What do you think of, of, uh, street legal golf carts in town?
Street legal golf carts in town? I don't think that's a question I want to answer off the cuff.
No. You know, the community's listening, but I, I don't care. I asked, you know, in your, your opinion, I...
I would again say I would rather have a better prepared answer. I've seen communities that have that in very limited areas, but usually that's around a golf course.